I place the meeting, just give them some little gems up in there.
Listen.
How about you?
I call this meeting board, Mr. Black, do like this end case and pledge.
Understand. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this time that we can come together to do the business for our community. We ask that you will guide us and direct us to do the things that are pleasing to you, to do the things that will be good for our community. And we ask that you will watch over our policemen as they go about their business on a daily basis. We thank you for the blessings that you've bestowed upon each one of us and upon our community. We just ask you now, Lord, to continue to be with us. We ask you to use us in that service. And we ask you now, Lord, in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, to continue to be with us throughout this day and into the next. Amen.
Amen.
Now I say the prayers of the ladies.
Our prayers of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome all our visitors tonight. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I have a motion, Mr. Black. My second.
I have a motion and second to approve the agenda. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Is there an approved, uh, motion to approve the minutes from the June twenty first, twenty twenty two meeting?
I make motion to approve the minutes, June twenty first, twenty twenty two.
My second.
I have any twenty first, twenty twenty two meeting? All in favor, vote aye.
Uh huh.
All opposed? Motion passed. Y'all second to look over. Beers.
That is, uh, system of engineering. And that's where we get, uh, some SWAT phone nine one one technology for the police department, the fire department. We do two phone lines for the fire department, three phone lines, police department. It's five hundred dollars per line. But most of the time, say, well, officers or the DLS people's out. You've always just hooked it up near the radio, it can come through your phone. So, uh, and Mike Brown, um, Danny and Red Vichy, Red Vichy have it. And, uh, and then there's Barry Patton and Brian, Brian, uh, Hawk. No one, what, once, once, once they got that to us in straight. We went ahead with this, like, quarter left over there, paying, paying verbal services. I knew you'd catch it. Cause like, you're gonna catch it, twenty thousand dollars, you're short on that, Johnny, Danny.
Is there a motion to approve the payment of bills?
I make a motion for the bill.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the payment of bills, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next, we have public comment. Somebody have any public comment?
What does it feel?
I'm serious tonight. Um, I don't have words to express how grateful be it that Pope nine six forty is to counseling the people and individual members of council and to the people who see your love for the help we've gotten lately. Uh, thank y'all got the, uh, oh, the brochure flyer for the car show. That's going to help us a long way in the car show. And we had really good participation at last one, we had sixty entries. That bigger, bigger this year. And getting again, many sponsors, uh, special board member, her family. And recently, the police department has been good to us on this, but let's use the back block there as a stage. And, uh, power out, I'm sure, got more of it. And I, thanks me to have to say it, but I have a special thanks for Jarhead Hatcher there. He helped me put me up with the right people and the, uh, board supervisors. And I know we, for these humans, we ride our little bus. Our little bus is really old now, drop made in rain issue. So I have to be replaced by government. So I want to do for the supervisors and they voted unanimously to help us out. And all the members were on board with their discretionary fund. To, uh, put us back on the road. We're too old and out of shape to push that bus. Thank you, uh, you.
Yeah, okay.
You want to come up, should I, one minute?
Let me see here, is it okay, second?
Yeah.
I don't mean to be disrespectful, but I, I'm old too.
We're not.
Yeah. I just want to let everybody know that, uh, Quilts of Valor, uh, is an organization that honors veterans. Uh, they're gonna be honored, uh, on September the tenth at ten AM at the POW MIA Memorial. They're gonna be honored at the chief of the police here. Like, he's gonna be on, my brother Phil back here, he's gonna be on, and myself too. So, uh, it's a big thing for, for our community. Get this thing up with, uh, P A systems, some for, for the lady to speak through and everything. It's, uh, September. And I'm glad that they chose POW MIA Memorial. And this is the second time that they've chosen. Like I say, it's a nationwide tour. They, they've come, uh, come up with a scheme to get, uh, some parking, some jersey blocks placed up at the old road. Uh, we had a guy lined up to do processes, shot sky high. He can no longer do that. But he has offered his service as far as putting the pavement down up there for the rest of the parking lot. At the end of the memorial. I'd just like to, you know, if maybe you guys, uh, wanted to chip in and maybe pay for the pavement and, and get him to put it down. I'm not sure.
I talked to a couple council members. What we discussed, um, at the time, of course, we just, we've been able to set them with all the contributions mapped out in budget. That's what I was throwing in, but what we would like to do. And, uh, I've seen probably give you all enough money for you all to buy a, a nice gun, like, say, from H U B or something. Raffle that gun off, raise the money on that, because I've always been a firm believer, dreams are free, but hustles sold instead. You know what I'm saying? So a little sweat equity on that, but then we're after tickets, we have the Civil War Festival, all that, whenever. I, I think it, you got me fifty tickets, you got John Tobe fifty tickets. I, I mean, we raised the twenty four, twenty five hundred and get it done that way.
That should run the red.
And, and, uh, yeah, yeah, you should have field. But how does that sound, GM? Does that sound okay?
Well, you know, that sounds all right to me.
Yeah.
But, uh, riding it forward incorporated is behind all of this stuff.
Right.
And it being a POW MIA issue.
Right.
We don't like to make it about anything other than POW MIA.
Gotcha, yeah.
I mean, not that there's anything wrong with it, as far as I'm concerned.
Right.
But, uh, I don't know that if
We was just very, so that's, I was just gonna say, yeah, this, this is possible for the family, by the way, to further raising the new budget.
For you, y'all don't have to do that.
Yeah, you don't have to do any of that challenge anymore. I would take the, I'm gonna say often, Mr. Oh, well, in that way, it would just be easier, because like I said, we've got a schedule, when we, when we allocate that budget every year, the ten thousand dollars contributions, a large, the largest portion of that money will go to the Civil War Festival, the gingerbread, and the cars.
Yeah.
And then we have a few other items like the F O D and some other things, but we don't care one bit to coordinate that and put our network in and do that, and then just turn the funds over to you.
Is this gonna be something that you would, uh, you would be advertising the POW MIA?
Well, if you want to
I would actually prefer that you didn't, but my issue is not to be used for anything, you know?
Gotcha.
Uh, that's why we've never done no fundraiser before.
Right, I understand.
It's about eighty two POW MIA's that's still accounted for. And we don't wanna put anything
You don't wanna tarnish the name.
There you go. That's it. But now, if you guys
We can just say fundraiser, and we won't use any, you know what I'm saying?
To help with community projects.
That's right, and I, and we could, I feel like we've raised twenty five hundred, three thousand, three hundred.
Yeah. I, I, I don't want y'all to think that I'm trying to be arrogant about that. I mean, I hope you understand what I'm saying.
But I understand the respect for the, the eighty two thousand and a half.
Uh, I
You've done your payment, John, John.
Yeah, John has agreed to do it.
Well, you said you'd buy a plenty to do. What would you say?
What does happen?
Phil, Phil would decide somewhere.
Sell three hundred tickets at ten dollars a ticket.
Right.
Yeah. And we had one individual the other day about fifty tickets to sell.
Right.
He said if he wins it, he's gonna give it back to us and we can raffle it again.
That's awesome.
But that's a great idea, John, and I, I appreciate it.
We'll do that, and, and if you want to, it if y'all have guns, well, I've got a big gun, dude, and my dad, my uncle Charlie, I can tell you what kind of gun Ralph off, but
I think I did that talk to Chad.
Chad, we talked to Chad.
Chad, man, it's been kind of tough.
Yeah.
Because that's a lot of rugby for softball girls.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. We'll do that, we'll, we'll ride the gun, we'll do the fundraising, we'll turn over the funds to you, we'll get paid. At the last hall, standing right on top of the place, earning me a thirty half, and we'll get the jersey block up there and say it.
I want, I want y'all to know, John, John worked hard on that, on that deal, getting those jersey blocks in the tour, both. And of course, it was true, it was ideal to put the jersey blocks up there, so. And I, I mean, I agree with it, because if we could move those old rock out up there and make something nice. And I like moving forward for the community, uh, or the county, state, or whatever. But I think putting a POW MIA issue out there now, uh, has really become a big thing here in our community, because we've got people coming from all over, just to be, just to be a part of it. And I appreciate your effort.
Well, I, I met with the gentleman at the little street, lady, I opened the mic and, uh, and Mike was connected with, uh, Miss Tubman was able to get him to come up today and look over the park and give us some ideas on what we need to do to make that as a whole. I mean, even up there, playing around there, you have just the whole atmosphere gives, you know, it's always good to get somebody else's opinion, because what they gotta learn, we all have learned spots. And, you know, I, I, I know I'm at several of those spots. So Mike came up, tonight, he gave us some, uh, good advice on what we need to do in the park, over the park, to move the mode, to get it brought back up to park like it was, and I think it was putting in a whole partnership up there on that park. So he, he said early nineties or mid nineties, so he was saying it ninety four.
I'm appreciative of supervisors too, I think. Is there fiscal year? All of the discretionary money were free, free in state.
July one, and all, July one, and you could also, yeah, but if you want to, this time around, so just, if you want to, if you want us to do together, I mean, we
I'm all for it, John.
Okay, with the flags on the jersey block?
Yeah, that's what Terry, Terry had mentioned.
Like a Navy flag, an Air Force flag, Marine, Army, National Guard?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, if you get back to that quilts of Valor thing, that thing is all over this country. And once they do that up here on September the tenth, it's gonna be published all across the country. People are gonna start coming here. I, I mean, that's just my opinion.
I believe you, I believe so.
I know Hoa Thunder's coming this weekend, uh, to visit the memorial, coming out of Maryland.
Three weeks ago, that quilts of Valor was in Tennessee and honored like thirty veterans, and it was like all over the news.
Yeah.
And it was, they was there with the news cameras, it was showing, you know, they're putting the quilt over the veterans and all that are there. It was awesome.
Lady is coordinated in this area, and she put me up there. She said it's a ten thousand member organization.
Wow.
And I was like, first thought it was something like regional.
Yeah.
Ten thousand members.
It's a big thing, it's an honor.
What we can do, what we can do is we can
Just don't put it on Facebook. They will jerk that down, Twitter, and if you put that gun rack on Facebook.
Oh, yeah, I got paid on Facebook, posting that from long day.
Yeah. My, my daughter's softball team is doing a gun rack, and the day we post it on Facebook, they took it down and restricted everybody's accounts.
They didn't, they, uh,
What we'll do, if you want to do, we'll go ahead and get John Weezy and do that, and link down, and we'll be doing that other. And that way, say he gets that, like, old bird with knowledge, whatever it is, you know what I'm saying?
How much can you pay?
Yeah, I think
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Twenty three hundred, uh, material, anyway.
And he will donate his labor.
He's gonna donate the labor, it's just material.
Jim, have you been to the, to the wall on your bike?
Several times.
Isn't that something?
It is.
In the morning, we got the league with the first bike parade at twelve o'clock. It was one thirty before we even got to go.
Yeah.
And we blacks were in front of us, and we got there at seven thirty in the morning.
Yeah, I think
It's amazing.
Both times we were there on the ride, it was like we got there at seven o'clock. The last time was three o'clock afternoon before we pulled up.
It was even more big than it used to be.
But I, I appreciate it very much, what you guys were saying.
I got a question, we're just taking around that off there, but if he was talking about a big bike ride, then
From
Anywhere.
From anywhere to United States, oh, yeah, you could.
I mean, if you could, like, say, do stuff like that, you bring a lot of people into the area.
Yeah, if you offer, if you offer it, then they're gonna come.
Well, what do you offer, I mean, what would you do about, like, once they get, once they get there?
Well, you have to have a ceremony or some, you have to have a ceremony of some sort, and then all be veterans that we've got, probably.
Well, I mean, now, if you had like a that would be a part of the thing, wouldn't it?
Most motorcycles are just looking for a place to go.
Well, that, that's what we may do, we need to talk about, and that'd be every year thing.
Well, I get that
What if we could blow it up right now, and go ahead and get on this right now, and plant for September tenth? Have them all there during the Valor, quilt, the quilt of Valor. Do you think that, if, if we got on that
Yeah, oh, yeah, you could, yeah.
And, and do that?
A bike ride, a bike ride, remember?
What's that, Phil?
Uh, when the flag toured, the POW flag, when it toured America, we went to Lexington, Kentucky, uh, and met up with a bunch of bikers to bring it to Grundy, Virginia.
Yeah.
By the time we got to Grundy, there were sixteen hundred bikes.
Oh.
So are we, we be allowed to advertise that?
Oh, yeah.
We can advertise that, you just can't do it from, from that.
Right, yeah, right.
So we can put it on Facebook.
Right.
Well, uh, you gotta think about something up there, you don't have much room for cars and bikes.
We've got a good place.
Well, I mean, I've thought about a place to park your bike, you know, you get two thousand bikers, if we can't get up there.
Well, if that, if that lower part down there, I
That bottom part. That bottom part.
Bottom part.
If you get that motor up and cleaned up, that'll fit.
I ask, now, this is something that I've asked, and I've been trying to get them to do this, uh, the wall of fallen warriors. I was actually the one that came up with the fallen warriors. Wall to the other guys, because I would just do the rap with the BMW. But I have been asking those guys, they have, I don't know, have you, have you seen their, their display that they've got? I thought that would be an awesome thing for that lower level up there. I mean, you know, clean that off a bird real nice, build a shelter, put the, put the wall with all those names. Well, that's what I'm talking about, you know, and, and this is what I discussed with them, you know? Not like it being a permanent thing there, you know, but yet leave it there for people to come and see, you know?
Tell them if they leave that up, we'll
Uh, depends on how long.
The last time it was here, what, near the hospital?
Now, this is a different one.
Oh, this is
You're talking about the Vietnam Memorial Traveling One. But now, we can get that anytime soon.
There was so many bikes that come through, it was crazy.
Yeah, well, actually, Pete Vance, I was a woman, that did that, brought the bikes.
You know about this lately?
No. That was when Linda Singleton wrote But Yeah. But the one that I'm talking about, uh, they've got, uh, veteran, or soldiers that was killed in different wars, from Montgomery County, uh, McCall, Castle, uh, Russell, Buchanan.
Oh, this is more of our area.
Yeah.
Oh.
And, but, you know.
I've been brainstorming, maybe we all can do that brush. Uh, because we, when we found space in town, I was thinking maybe Terry, if we could put, start putting that brush at, of course, we can't write down, because we got our park all up there. But we own that property next to the railroad tracks, one up in the crypt, where we built that parking lot for the walking trail. I would much rather have the brush up there at the end of that parking lot, next to the railroad track property. When, when we burn it, and if we could start just taking it there, of course, we can't have, we got lots of vehicles parked there, jersey blocks and cones and they're using it for their equipment, so they don't get on the handyos property. But after the bridge is somewhat repaired, we could probably get fire department to go up there, earn that road shot. No more dump site there, and create another dump site over here at the parking lot of the walking trail at the end, you know, where it's swollen. Now, on that property, we put some matty nail layers, road mat, down there. But I would much rather have it over there, wouldn't you all agree, than burning that brush at overlook park? You got a lot of the, the flags?
I'm a little bit confused, I, I know you built the fence of the overlook.
Just at the tree.
Yeah.
Because
Oh, I thought it was to hide the brush.
Now, that was just the tree, because, uh, versus, uh, our, our property, not building the entrance carrier, said the tree was, you know, that slide off on the steps, if you go up there now, you might have to find work on. Because the steps, you only got about four inches of step, you can step, step on. Now, there's still people that go up there, but we, we fenced that off now, because by law, and with works and steps, if we have it opened up and somebody gets up there and gets hurt, we've got to pretty much do as much as we can to keep them from getting on the trail. You're always, I mean, you know, you're gonna have to really ignore it to go around that fence to get back on the trail.
So I saw a picture of the fence, and I thought, maybe
I'm ignoring it.
It was down.
That's like the lane, talk, like, to the trail, to the overlook, going to top of the page.
Yeah.
I believe you, Joe.
Better than that, well, me too.
Well, Terry said we could, because what, the ways of Valor, it goes right across it.
Now, Barry is supposed to go over our width, and we were gonna talk to you, I said we could go way on, on up above it, to the hollow, in the hollow, all the way up to the end of it.
That's where I was thinking.
And put it right there and see if we're getting a paralel coming through there. If it won't, that'd be the best place.
Nobody would ever sit there. To me, it would be better there than over there.
Or we can go, go back, back up in there, you know, work turns it deep, that would be the best place, nobody could see it at all.
Don't underestimate the nation, yes, for forgiveness, it's life sometimes. Like, that tree, like, your high street, but I won't get messaged, you want to cut that down? And Pete came out, looked at it, said it wasn't, wasn't the responsibility, there's a telephone line. We called Verizon, then Ram, Chief Ram, was calling nine one one, Verizon came out, and he said, we just won't cut it down, because it's up through, it's up through between his lines, it's one face line, right?
It's a telephone.
It's telephone line. So Verizon don't even have the tree off that line, it was on bicep with kill one. So I mean I don't know how to say this any other way, I'm trying to, uh, but if I drive to the fire department crazy, they get that, that one, it's like, hey, can you remember that burnt pile for me? So they're usually like, let Bill up, because I can call them every two weeks.
Well, then call them if they're there.
Probably about once every three months, something there, yeah. Now, one, one of our problems is, is not all of our, uh, anybody's
I would be willing to volunteer sometime to not pile that up, because you, you take them one mess to another mess.
Well, most of it is, uh, a burn now, you put burn, says a big pile of burn right now. And we took one load of it, the rest of it's been other people.
I don't
See it up there in the step.
Well, I had a little property on, on the home in town, and we struggled, and someone, I was driving, they didn't have a contract for there, and they called me, and, uh,
Yeah, like
And they asked, and I said, yeah, well, I think we call somebody, we really don't have any other shows. Yeah, I mean, it was too much work, so. So, I mean, I told them, go ahead and take it up there, and that's what they did.
Oh, well, we broke some legs.
Town of Richland, is, are you buddies with all of them? I mean, they run up our trail twenty times a day, dump and rush up the landfill. They've got a truck and pick it up in one wide.
There's a gun.
Like landfill, like
Huh?
I thought landfill, huge, take
No, Richland dumps over every day.
Why can't we put the brush in the ravine down in the park, in Steve Valley? And chain off the power lines? Yes, how, even when you first turn in.
Right.
It's on your way.
We have all the way back in there.
So if the power line was an issue, that's part of our problem, is other people.
Right.
And so we just put a chain across down there at the end of it, we've already got a chain across it, and put camera there. Yeah, just lock it.
Same thing, that was one.
It looks good, you will do that?
I'll see what you like it. What, you know, check the power line, you know?
It probably worked with Terry, because it's a farm.
The bypass, that paralel line, we're moving around that curve.
We really didn't take the backhoe up there one day?
Just clean the rocks out.
Clean the rocks out.
And we put enough dumping down there for that.
We just cleaned it up, and, and maybe put a sign up, uh, smell on your camera.
Yeah.
We do that.
Or lock it up, I'll put you a gated crossfit, and lock it up, let you all using it.
And we, what we do, we're that solid rock in there, we could drill us two, two, six, six posts or whatever, and put a chain across, and just sign it off. And then that way, if motorcycles do it, then we can take the chain off, clean the park down there, and get cleaned.
Make your park with the brush.
Right. That's, that's it, and we clean.
That's a pretty hard surface to do there.
This is solid rock. And, 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 rock plate. Whenever, I didn't, I didn't realize it, Terry said, go ahead.
Free time, nobody receiving mess, right?
Right.
Right. You won't say
You won't ever say the mess again.
That's why people have to, you know, hug again. You turn up that bar, get on your
I agree, but I, I didn't, uh, you know, I don't think Terry told me about the power line, I'm just, I didn't know what, like, I do it. I agree, but I, I didn't, um, you know, I don't think Terry told me about the power line. I'm just, I didn't know what to play out with. Unless, uh, I, I got a council member sometimes with his real tires, thirty, four hundred acres of water. This land is a brush, but I won't make sure there's any, I won't put you on the spot. Terry's going to set up in that ravine up in the hollow.
He's taking backhoe and cleaning that.
Cleaning that up, yeah.
But I, I'm, I'm serious. The rich land is half a load sometimes while I'm broke.
And this is the truth. Years ago and all that, till the first two, two and a half years I was here, we could get them, we could help them. We never sent them a vehicle. They'd help us. Never sent us a vehicle. During the last six months, anything they could fit for us, they sent us to be the good ones, Terry.
Got, come down there and brought us a wrench to use to cut the water, cut the water out and he stood and watched.
And I don't say that in my time with my guys, if you didn't have, you know, if you were not going to attend every day. If you had a little.
If we can clear on that, I went back and like we're talking, that's all we have. It's when we pull in the overlook park, might put fifty foot ladder, put that.
I'll burn and then clean rest of that up out there.
Your deal. To see how it works out.
Does it not make you skeptical somewhat if we did want to leave in the first year, you paid seventy-five thousand dollars? In the third year, you pay thirty-seven thousand five hundred? I mean, that's a little overboard, maybe.
It's a lot of money.
And then, you know, like I said before, with people myself, they don't have any discipline, balance, the west front of, with. I'm all for saving. But why couldn't we, isn't it?
Okay, I don't know about the money aspect and the four-year deal. I actually went to the technical center when they first brought this attention to us and they, you know, described it and what it does and how it works. Um, kept mentioning over and over, and I don't know, I know he's talked to John Lou, I don't know how many have it to you. I know he talked to Jamie. I always hear when he talks to Jamie. You know, he kept saying over and over to me that in time it will pay for itself. Now, he's saying seventy-five thousand the first year and thirty-seven, you know.
That's only if we want to go.
Okay, okay. Based on what I have looked at, every morning, okay, between the hours of seven fifty AM and eight o'clock when the bell rings. That's when ninety percent of my parents are showing up. That is what's causing the backups on Cedar Valley Drive is because everybody waits till the last second to get their kids to school. Okay, when I'm standing right here in front of the school and I'm directing traffic, you will not believe the vehicles that I see coming around this curve at Speedy Lou. And at this curve down here around the fire station, vehicles absolutely flying off the face of the earth. Just to get their kids into school, for them to sit at Cedar Valley Drive for five, ten minutes and the bell ringing and they're still sitting over here at Hilling Waters trying to get their kids into school. Now, the teachers have been nice for the past two years with, and it's going to change. If that bell rings at eight o'clock, those teachers are coming in and they're shutting the door. If you are not, did that and we had thirty, forty students lined up in the office down the hallway for a tardy slip. Now, like I said, I, I think this will be beneficial and it will slow people down. And it will get these parents to get their kids to school on time. That, and it will cut down the congestion in the backs and, and it's what I tell parents because they get aggravated, you know, there's nothing we can do. I understand that when they, some parents, we have an issue dropping the kids off. They want to walk around and take their sweet time and take fifty million pictures before you walk in. You know, there's a hundred and eighty days of school. They're still doing that on the hundred and seventy ninth day. You know, I mean, it's every morning I see. So, you know, it's my job and I'm going to do it. Let your kids off and let's go. You know, I mean, I've, I've tried and this year, this past four years was a big time on traffic congestion. I didn't see as much. But I did notice the speeding coming around both curves and the traffic jams I have at seven fifty to eight o'clock in the morning because that's when majority of the kids are coming to school.
Like how many speeding violations would you say you write?
I'll try to have this here. I don't have the personnel bodies to put out there.
You know, I've thought about it a lot. Why couldn't we take our own officer, Mr. Grantery, and try to handle this on our own for a while? Set up our own radar. Well, they've got a new officer right here.
Yeah, she's quite tiny.
But I mean, we've talked about what, two hours a day?
Yeah, well, I mean, that, that, that is something that we could.
And then if we see we got a real problem.
Yeah. You know, because every morning and the evening.
If you're there, your radar for a certain period of time, a month or so, people are going to get it.
They're going to slow down.
Just like I do in Waltham. I mean, that's a big speaker.
I mean, I remember John coming to work one morning and there was a parent that tried to pass him on a double solid yellow line just to get their kid to school.
And I know what you're talking about the speeding.
Oh, yeah.
There's a lot of it, but it doesn't necessarily have to be at the school zone. It's people flying past Speedy Lou and coming down the trash. But the, uh, school zone is only probably seven, probably eight hundred feet long.
Yeah, because it starts between the signs of the school zone.
Or call me, Doc. I know you have an issue already. See if they want to put red lights up on both ends. That's slowing down. They'll learn to get up, get here on time.
I mean, we, that'd be fine, or if we did radar occasionally, I think you'll see. You know, if there is an issue within the school zone, I think it will correct itself. But, you know, it's not going to dump anything out of here.
But wouldn't you have two officers on it, one up here and one down here?
On each end.
On each end? That's two officers that you're.
Or I'm just.
The contract and all that.
The contract.
Did anybody check to see if we get, did we know contract for two years versus four years or four years?
I, I haven't spoken to Greg. He did, he did contact me one day last week. He said he wasn't liable on it. I'll build, he said. We couldn't, you know, I, I was going to ask about moving this discussion to the next council meeting. Him and the other would be here in person to answer any questions council would have. That, that's, that's an option they gave me that I could, I could do with council.
And is it a state law? That had to be eleven miles over to be in violation of two.
We're, we're being very generous about that.
Where does a thirty-five come in? Like, is it in a state law on the radar system?
Well, that, that's, that's what, that's what Blue Line Solutions sets up at, is ten miles or anything over. You know, so Spelling is twenty-five because Spelling is varied. It's, it's schools, some schools have Spelling is fifty. So they, it, it varies. I believe Solutions, I understand the way their system is set up, until it's ten miles over, it's not going to. It's, it's not going to take, take the picture and issue a sentence.
What we used to have got a motorcycle going seventy, except with.
Oh, no, it wasn't.
I think I'll, I'll try to shoot something.
You gotta kind of figure out which one without money.
I put on the table.
I mean, money issues, you know, it's saying it'll pay for itself. I mean, that's true, but you don't know.
And you know, I wish, like, if they had a year or two year instead of one month, I'd feel better about it. Get something to do with that.
Didn't they do a study? How did it turn out?
There are still violations, but he says.
I'll make a motion to table to a victim that we can listen to, to guys, to guys to see what he's going to say.
I have a motion to second table, Blue Line Solutions Traffic Control and School Zone, Work Zone until next meeting. All in favor, go bye. All opposed. Next, we have schedule speaker Chief Brown.
I'll be pretty, pretty brief. Uh, we did receive the notification. We did, we are getting the SRO grant this year. We were awarded, awarded that grant. Well, not a really whole lot to, whole lot to go into, but back in nineteen ninety-eight, I was working in the emergency medical center. I got a phone call from a man named Jack Hasbury and everybody, everybody, okay, he said, he said that, uh, he want to take a shot at me. Nowadays, most police departments, police, police chiefs, other agencies, they're wanting to hire someone who's already got through the school, already been certified. I'd rather, after speaking to John, that I'm going to get the chance to give, give another individual the same shot that I was giving, enough that she has as long as career as I had. I just gave it away a little bit. I was going to introduce this, Ruby Shabram. She's a, she's been a hard time. We heard her sworn in this evening with the, with the council's permission. Uh, John Apter is here.
Thanks much. My belly's stuck out. Put your right hand on the ballot, raise your left hand. I, Brandy Shabram.
I, Brandy Shabram.
Having been appointed as police officer for the town of Cedar Bluff, Virginia.
Having been appointed as police officer, police officer for the town of Cedar Bluff, Virginia.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge all the duties incumbent upon me.
Discharge all.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God. I think y'all all need to get down here. All of you all need to get down here with her and get a picture with her. And Miss will stand up there. All the board, come down here and get a picture with her and, uh. And I'll give chief, I mean, so he can have evidence to say me. He sounds serious with it. He is so serious. Next, we have our town manager for.
Hello, the town of Cedar Bluff and I was going to invite you all, but I didn't realize it was invitation only, but I was notified. Miss Mary Luttrell, uh, her and her husband Jess Luttrell moved to the town of Cedar Bluff in nineteen sixty. She will be one hundred years old Saturday, so I'm having her plaque made for the town. She's always living citizen in the town of Cedar Bluff, Miss Luttrell is. If any of you all have met Miss Luttrell, she's a very beautiful lady, being one hundred years old. I, I could imagine what she looked like forty, fifty years ago. I mean, she is still striking to be one hundred. I don't, I don't look that good when I'm sad, you know what I mean? But she is, she is so sweet to me, Miss Luttrell is. But anyway, we're going to present her a plaque and I'm going to actually have something written out on the plaque and give it to, and Chris will, Chris is going to, uh, give it back to Miss Luttrell. We're having her party Saturday. So I want to mention that. Brad, I've had a ton of complaints and we've got this one guy who inherits some property on Indian Street Road. We've sent letters. We've knocked on his door. He will not mow his grass. Now, he got, uh, he inherited this property. Uh, it's three feet tall. It's been that way. Terry knows. And he's like a herd. It's like he's a recluse. And, uh, is there any way that we can create something or have you draft something that we can actually hire contractors, I'm Mr. Stillwell, whoever, to go mow that? And then, and then attach that to the property? It turns into a, of the equivalent of a tax lien and you can let it, let it back to sell.
We're going to have to because I've got two properties in this town. They will not respond. And he's, that person's one of them. And the other ones, where did that carry the? Yeah. I'll send them to you tomorrow. Okay, now, I was just brainstorming on this. If you all went through the financials in your packet, uh, I always put up with this, uh, the financials from the banks. We have roughly thirty-seven thousand dollars in that account that we still haven't been able to get those EBI switched over to ADP that's still hitting Carter Baker Trust. I was wanting to have permission to maybe possibly outbid a Terry's trust. With, with that money, uh, Carter Baker Trust, it was, but I didn't want to do it without getting their own blessing, you know what I'm saying? If you look in your packet, you're going to do Carter Baker Trust, you're, as you'll see. That we have thirty-seven thousand. That's the whole thing we have going in there every month. And we, and Missy has tried, we've tried, we've got twenty-two hundred ninety dollars a month going in every month that we haven't been able to get switched to the actual bank. That's the reason I didn't want to close this account down. But we have one debit a month and it's the ten dollars. I'm going to write down, we've got a little over thirty-seven thousand dollars. I would like to pay Terry's truck off and, uh, with that, but I didn't, I didn't want to just do it and, and so if y'all don't want me to do it, I won't do it. But.
Well, it's just sitting there. You're right.
John, I got a question. Is that thirty-seven thousand dollars, but is it part of, is it included in the balance that you showed us or is it a separate? It is a separate.
It is a separate account.
So that's thirty-seven thousand dollars we have.
To the side. Right.
The only, the only liability is the town has, right, town, it's too big.
How much is that?
Uh, I, I tried to call today to get payoffs and I didn't, I wasn't able to. But I would say both payoffs together is probably no more than thirty-one hundred dollars to, for both of you.
Should pay both.
I could pay both.
So you pay it off. That's what I do.
The only reason, the only reason I'm interested in doing this, uh, you know, just outside the box, we have outdated police. The only reason, the only reason I'm interested in doing this, and, and uh, just outside the box, we have an outdated police force with their vehicles, and I'd hate to have two utility truck payments that we have currently, and then if we updated our police force vehicles, because our, our cars, you know, we rotate between vehicles. Uh, I talked to Eddie Aldo, uh, earlier in the week, and they said, hopefully by the end of this week, vehicle, the BJ, had a little accident in, hopefully they finish by the end of the week. But with that being said, you know, we probably need to update now, because like, like, the chief's car, well over a hundred thousand miles, it's crammed a bit, what year is the chief?
Two thousand and ten.
Two thousand and ten, so it's, it's twelve years old now. Uh, how many vehicles, miles does your vehicle have on it, uh, Dan? Hundred five, now it's a good vehicle, Ford Explorer, it's good, uh, it's probably the best one we have in the fleet currently, but TJ's vehicle is junk. It's a dodge, it's, it's a fix, so what I'm saying is, as time goes on, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to pull the trigger, probably update a couple of vehicles. We don't have to buy another one. Uh, I would recommend buying at least one new one, but you know, we're gonna have to update that, that, you know, vehicles. I mean, that's just, that's a gift, I mean, you're gonna have to, if you have a police force.
That Charger doesn't even have a hundred thousand miles on it. I drive it from my house on Lingo Linga to the school. I know last year, I mean, we've spent well over seven thousand dollars on that car, and I, I drive it from here to the school.
Oh, it's a Lingo, it's a Dodge.
I mean, we fixed the front end, I mean, it's like every month, something broke that thing.
They went on Lingo, they went on Moss.
Mm-hmm, yep. Do I have your own permission to do that? One or two? I'll pay a boat off. I'll tell you what I'll do, you know, I'll call first thing in the morning. Well, but what I'll do is I'll call first thing in the morning, I'll get a payoff for both vehicles, I'll get a five day payoff on, on both vehicles, and I'll contact the authorities individually to let you know, uh, what we, what payoff is, and we can try to get a boat off if you can. And then that way, because I don't foresee that money, I just don't know why, and Missy is the best in the world at getting stuff switched over, but we have not been able to get that EDI from this AEP money, switch it to National Bank, and she's got pulled her hair out, trying to get that done. But with that two thousand dollars money, that will sort of help us cash flow if we have to pull trees or buy vehicles for police departments, what I'm saying.
If you do pay it off, you still have five hundred eighty-five thousand in the bank.
I tried. I tried.
That's true.
I tried.
And save you those payments, huh?
Yep, we have a limit of time. Twenty twenty-six. We just have that, we, we see it at the end of, at the end of June, with the, our second draw. Was it that come in yet? How much do we give this, would you guess? Forty-five thousand. Will you give me five hundred, you don't know what you're talking about? What's that? I haven't said nothing, paying up, so you can both have them, yeah. I, I'd love to have a motion, but you agree, Brad? You can do that. Alright. Moving forward. Uh, we've had lots of rain, several trees down, overlooked, speedy loo, Mike Cilew is gonna take care of the speedy loo tree for me tomorrow. Uh, Ed Ward Drive, we'll get him fixed out on an emergency basis, I talked to him, knowing again, you're looking at price. Overlooked tree, I was being closed, uh, I already talked about that fence there. Ms. Haykey, I just wanna ask you, Luke, if you work, where you work at, um, the, uh, she lives two thirty-nine Indian Creek Road, she's got some mulch. Tree beside her house, soon as you run the railway truss, like, in, in, in those offices left, soon as you go through that truss, she's worried about some of those mulch trees following over the property. Who would be, do you have a contact, the railway, or, or somebody that would contact Deputy? You've got Deputy some? Deputy, you've got Deputy some?
He's still got him on that, I'm sure.
Okay.
That's, I don't, I don't know if I'm able to.
I need to get Deputy, I need to get his number, so we can call him, we can get in touch with someone about that. Yeah, he likes to bull with me, he said, I like to go back in closed doors too much, so I'm gonna try to be as discreet as I possibly can, because Mr. Rapp, bullies me. But anyways, I've had a citizen complaint about someone wanting to operate a business out of the storage building in a residential area. And Miniter's talked about this individually, and it's in, what's that part of? It's uh, I don't wanna say some, it's not, but it's uh, what's that is, residential, and if it's, if it's an R one zone, or a R two zone, or a B two zone. If it's residential, no? Yeah, I mean, we, I'm looking at the, the zoning, uh, ordinance that we have applying.
If they're operating a business, what they have to apply for a business license?
If, they never applied for business licenses, and that's what I'm complaining.